On Zoom with us. Nick is traveling this evening, so he will not be joining us. It is seven o'clock, so I'd like to call this meeting to order. Because of COVID-19, social distancing recommendations, our meeting tonight is being held virtually via Zoom. Council members, city staff, and myself are joining remotely, while the city administrator Laura Smith and the city clerk Audrey McClanahan are on their own, at their own workspaces at City Hall. The public is invited to participate by using the instructions included in the city council calendar item listed on the front page of missionks.org. Public participants will be allowed to make comments through the online chat feature. So please note that your comments are visible to the entire group. If you wish to make a public comment, please state your name and city of residence for the record. And let's be conscientious of others trying to speak, speak slowly and clearly. And if I need to clarify something, then I will ask for clarifications. Before we begin our meeting this evening, please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Audrey, would you please call roll?
Yes, Falting House.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Flora.
Here.
Inman.
Here.
Crane.
Here.
Rothrock.
Here.
Anne Thomas.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, we do have two special presentations this evening. Our first is a proclamation which recognizes September as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. Many organizations and individuals throughout our community work to collaborate and raise awareness of suicide prevention resources that are available to all. I would particularly like to recognize and thank our educators, our mental health professionals, our police officers, and our mental health co-responder for all the work that they do in this crucial matter. I would like to also state for the record that the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline, that is staffed 24/7, is there to assist those in need as well as provide support for their loved ones. That number is 1-800-273-8255 or 1-800-273-TALK. We hope for continued progress for those tirelessly working in this effort and well-being and care for those experiencing distress. Our second item this evening is the diaper needs awareness week for 2020. Our final, and this is our final presentation. For the past few years, Mission has observed this week by issuing a proclamation to raise awareness of the widespread need for diapers to improve the health and welfare of infants and toddlers. Diapers cannot be bought with food stamps or WIC vouchers, and a monthly supply can cost as much as 6% of a full-time minimum wage worker's salary. To assist with meeting the need for diapers, the city has promoted a diaper donation effort. Diapers collected this month will be delivered to the Happy Bottoms Diaper Bank in Kansas City. We encourage the community to support this important event and provide relief to those in need. I believe our city administrator has a challenge for all of us, Ms. Smith.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We are pleased every year to not only be able to recognize the National Diaper Needs Awareness Week coming up, but last year I issued a challenge and said I would match whatever our employees brought in. And between our employee population and our community, we were able to donate over 2,000 diapers and about the same number of wipes to happybottoms.org, which is a fantastic resource. I was honored earlier this summer to welcome my new granddaughter, who is a very happy baby with a very happy bottom. And, you know, the joys of... Babies are wonderful, but the stress of the pandemic is enough for parents without having to worry about where clean and dry diapers are going to come from to keep their little ones safe and healthy. So I would like to issue a similar challenge to folks again this year and encourage you to drop off diapers and wipes at either City Hall or our community center. My granddaughter is very fortunate to be covered. So I hope you will join me in making sure we can cover the bottoms of other babies throughout our metro area.
All right, thank you, Laura. Moving on to item three, issuance of notes and bonds. We do not have any notes or bond to consider for our agenda this evening. So we'll move on to item four, our consent agenda. And our consent agenda does have one item tonight. Our council committees met on August 5th, and we fully discussed this item, which was the approval of an August 19th, 2020 city council meeting minutes as well as the August 27th, 2020 special city council meeting minutes. If a council member or a member of the public would like any of the minutes removed from the consent agenda, this would be the time to make that request. Hearing no objection, I would consider a motion to approve.
Mayor, I move that the city council adopt the consent agenda as printed for item 4A. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Audrey, please call for the vote.
Rothrock.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Falting House.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Inman.
Aye.
Flora.
Aye.
Anne Davis.
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you.
All right, that concludes item four, moving on to item five, which is public comments. If any members of the public participating via Zoom would like to make a public comment on items that are not on this agenda, now would be that make, now would be that time. So if anybody has an item to discuss or a question from the public, now would be the time to do that. Moving on to item six, action items from the planning commission. We do have one item from our planning commission this evening, which is an ordinance approving a preliminary development plan with stipulations for the construction of a multifamily housing development at 5399 Martway Street by the applicant Mission Bowl Apartments LLC. Mr. Scott, will you please brief us on this?
Thank you, Mayor. We have a presentation first by the applicant, Mr. Flood Banks, and his architect, Banks Floodman, excuse me.
That's okay. You're not the first person to do it that way, Brian.
Okay, I don't feel so bad now. Connor, the architect, so I will hand it off to them. They want to give a brief presentation on their project. Then after that, our planner, Ms. Kaitlin Service, will give the staff report. Thank you.
Okay, Kaitlin, do you have that, the PDF from planning that we, you could give us some control to, at least control to Connor?
Yeah, I can pull up the PDF, or are you able to share your screen?
Yeah, let me... Let me do this. I could probably pull...
Connor shared a screen. Emily or Audrey has control or hosting.
Connor, can you, can you go ahead and pull that up on your screen?
Yeah, at least once.
There we go.
Okay, great. Well, I know, thank you first and foremost, Mayor, Council, Brian, Kaitlin, city staff. You guys have been great to work with. I know that most of you have seen this presentation before. And so I do, I'll kind of go through the same process and explaining some of the changes that have occurred throughout the process with both the neighborhood and the city. And then if there's any additional questions, either Connor or myself would, will be happy to answer any of those. And so where we stand today is roughly 161 unit. It may end up a little north of that, but right now we're at about 161 unit complexes. And so Connor, maybe if you can go to site, I think it's slide three. I'll kind of, I'll start from there and kind of describe the layout and why, why we're at this layout. So, so everybody's very familiar with the site, it's the Mission Bowl site. So kind of throughout this process, a couple of the things we started to hear early on was, A, let's, let's not see a lot of parking from the street level. I've heard dog park seems like over and over again. And the importance of engaging Martway. And so with that, we tried to kind of back into a plan with the understanding that there's quite a few easements on this site that we have to navigate. And I'll explain a couple of those to you here. And so as you look at the, the site plan, you've got to the west, you've got the, the current parking that will remain parking, and that is for the peanut. And you can see the access point there on the northeast side of that. And then you can see also from that access, you can go straight south and you can access the Johnson County wastewater lift station. That is, that is one easement that we're working, working through. But we will ensure that that, that access continues to stay in place. The next easement we're working through is the cell tower, which is just on the east side of the lot. I'm sure everybody's very familiar with that cell tower. That is actually a property that is, a property that is separately owned. It is not, it's not a cell tower lease, it is an outright purchase. And so that, that, that lot is owned by American Tower, and they have an access easement. And so as you can see, that is one of the reasons that we did not go a little further to the east with the building so we can maintain that access for that cell tower. We wanted to balance hiding the cell tower, at least the base, with continuing to provide that access. And so that access will remain in place. The next item we really needed to focus on was the sewer main. So there's a 36-inch sewer main right there. Initially, we explored being able to build on top of it. That's one reason why we wanted 15-foot clearance within our podium or executive parking area so we could provide that access for any city needs or Johnson County wastewater needing to make some enhancements. Unfortunately, that wasn't something that they were interested in accommodating. So we will need to move that, that 36-inch main a little, there you go, Connor, that's perfect. Just like that. So we'll move it a little to the east, and then it'll connect back into the main, just to the north of the site. The next couple of things we tried to, to work through is the, the dog park. Initially, that was going to be parking. We felt like the, the site had plenty of parking, we're parked one per bed right now, which is code, and that we will continue, we're not going to ask for deviation on that. That's, that's where we feel it needs to be. But we did see an opportunity to program some area on the, on the west side of the site that would enable us to create an amenity, not just for our residents, but also for some of the general public that, that utilized the Rock Creek Trail. We don't know the hours yet. We want to be very sensitive to give residents their time within that dog park, but we would anticipate there being hours for the general public that utilize the, the, the trail or live in the city of Mission and just enjoy walking their dog. And so that, that was important for us to, to have that programming in place. I've heard one, one, one concern regarding how popular this park might be. And, and, and for me, that is, we would embrace that energy in this area. We think that brings a vibrancy to the, to the Class A apartment complex and the area as a whole, that hopefully people will, you know, not only live here, but use the businesses, et cetera, in the area. What we've also programmed is a little bit of a, a pocket fitness park. I'm sure most of you that have been on any of the newer trails, they've all got a little bit of a workout component that allows people that are utilizing the trail to stop for a minute and do a little workout. And so that's, that's some programming that we would like to, to put on that, that corner as well. And then the, the biggest thing was, how can we program the main floor, especially towards Martway? Initially, as most of you probably remember, it was a, just a parking area. And so in working with the city and neighbors and, and Connor, we came up with what we feel, if you want to go to slide four, Connor, I think it does a pretty good job of showing these live-work units. I know most of you have seen them. There's only going to be seven units. I do wish we could do more because I think these are going to be just an absolute hit. I think they would have been a hit regardless of COVID, but I do think the environment today and the fact that you're going to see more and more people probably work from home puts us in a position for success with these units. And so what these units are is it's 625 square feet on the lower level, and then 625 square foot one-bedroom unit on the upper level. As you can see in this picture, you can actually access your workspace or office from Martway. And that was important for us from visitors, et cetera, clients, colleagues, that whoever may be coming over to, to work with you. But what I think the neat, neat component is, is you've got stairs within, within the office that take you up to your, your one-bedroom unit. That unit, you'll be able to access the second floor corridor or hallway. So you can, you don't have to necessarily exit and go outside every time you enter your space. And so we think this is going to, like I said, going to be an absolute hit and utilized a variety of ways, whether it's just young entrepreneurs or individuals that spend majority of their time working from home, or individuals that travel a lot. I think you'll see a variety of people that, that use this, and we think it'll create a, a pretty neat energy up and down Martway in this area. Maybe go to a few slides down, Connor. I mean, you, you can talk a little bit about the height and some of the architectural design.
Sure. I think starting on this page, this is one thing to point out here. I think that's, that's, we're in response to some earlier comments we got, is the two setbacks happening. First, the building steps back after the live-work units for two levels. And then on the top floor, it steps back again, which you can see in elevation here as well as this section, the line drawing on the left portion of the page. And those, that was some of the most important preliminary comments we got was to not have it feel so imposing on Martway. And so those setbacks, we took directly from the Mission Design Guidelines and incorporated into the project. Then on these sheets, we're seeing the elevation as a whole and how those live-work units are really a strong majority of the facade on Martway. And then you have the clubhouse entry on the west side. This is the Mart, Martway Street frontage. Then, here's sort of a perspective on Martway from the pedestrian level showing how prominent those live-work units are. And we're going to really create sort of a commercial feel to it.
And I think one thing to note is, a couple of questions we've received is regarding management, security. There's going to be full onsite security, management, onsite leasing. There's going to be meeting rooms, workstations. You know, one thing that we're really starting to see is, is not only are individuals, you know, working from home more, but they do want to have a common area where they can work. And so I think those work, workstations that we're starting to integrate within some of our other multifamily projects are going to be a, a hit and something that are utilized moving forward. You know, nine-to-10-foot ceilings in all the units. Courts, granite countertops, there's going to be fitness, there's going to be... One of the concerns from a few of the neighbors was screening for the pool deck. And so we've incorporated a screening that really does a good job of giving not only residents, but most, but neighbors' privacy within that area. There's going to be a coffee bar, dog concierge, we call them pos-fos, and bike storage, you know, we want this development to really engage, not just with Martway, but Mission as a whole. And so we would anticipate there being a lot of people on, that live here that work in Mission or starting to work in Mission, you know, that, that are maybe looking for a rental, a Class A rental in the short term. But, you know, over the course of a year or two of living here, they fall in love with the city and want to call Mission home. You know, that's, that is our, what we believe will be the tenant. And people ask for, you know, what, what do you think your target audience is? And, you know, I, I just don't think there's a crystal clear answer to that. I think you'll see individuals that are young professionals, just graduating college, that may be, you know, interns on, you know, at someplace, a work nearby, to individuals that are empty nesters that want somewhere that's centrally located. You know, I think that's, is probably the most important thing to note, essentially located. What we see more and more is people don't want proximity to one thing, they want proximity to a lot of things, a lot of options. And Mission does a fantastic, Mission is located in an, in an area where you, you can enjoy the downtown Mission area or Shawnee, the Plaza, Corinth Square, you can get downtown quickly. You have a lot of options, and the access is there, and that's important. And I think that that is being reinforced with how the locale is doing. I know their lease-up's going extremely well right now, and that does not surprise us one bit. But, you know, that's, you know, because one question we did have from the neighbors, how can you guarantee lease-up? You know, we can't guarantee lease-up. All we can do is guarantee that we'll utilize our collective knowledge to put the city and, and the project in a position to be successful long-term. And, and we feel like that's what we've done here. You know, I know that I've met with majority of, of council members and city staff, and I've, we've appreciated your, your feedback. We've done our best to incorporate as much as possible. It's always a fine line, and you can't incorporate necessarily everything because you may get comments that are, that contradict. But we feel we've, we've done a good job of, of really bringing this thing to life, and, and we hope you feel the same way. Kaitlin, you want to give your staff report, please?
Yeah. Show my screen here. Okay, can everyone see that? Can everyone hear me? All right. So if you did attend the planning commission meetings or the community development meetings, some parts of this is going to look a little familiar to you, but I see some new names and faces joining the meeting tonight. So I'll kind of balance that by walking us through everything a little more briefly than previous meetings, but still happy to answer any questions if it would be helpful to go more in depth. So the aerial here shows the property at 39, 5399 Martway. It's the two lots on the southeast corner of Nollin Martway Street. And the property is studied by the four plans listed here. So the comprehensive land use plan, the Rock Creek redevelopment plan, the East Gateway redevelopment plan, and the Smart Move 3.0 regional transit plan. So the comprehensive plan designates the site as a future medium-density mixed-use, which primarily consists of medium-density attached residential housing such as apartments. Additional uses include live-work, offices, limited retail stores. The plan is really envisioning this to be that pedestrian-friendly area with floor-area ratios of 1 to 3. Additionally, the district is intended to serve as that transition zone between the lower-density residential neighborhoods and the areas of higher intensity development. So the proposed project is an apartment building with the live-work spaces, leasing office. The floor-area ratio is 1.05, and the multifamily housing at this location would serve as that transition zone between existing single-family residences to the south and then the higher-intensity uses at the Mission Mart and the Security Bank to the north. So their proposal is in conformance with the intent of the comprehensive plan. The Rock Creek Redevelopment Master Plan notes that the Mission property, Mission Bowl property right now, it provides a lot of redevelopment opportunity. It's mostly covered in surface parking lots there between Martway and the creek. So this plan really emphasizes the need for that strongly-defined public realm to kind of make that area, breathe some vibrancy into that area. The Rock Creek Trail borders the Mission Bowl property on the north side. So this proposed development is kind of aiming to create that true linear park experience for pedestrians along this part of the trail, rather than that feeling of simply walking on a wide sidewalk. So the proposal includes some features such as landscaping benches, planters, shade trees, the bike racks, the pocket parks. Those are all proposed to align with the city's vision of an activated street on this parcel. Additionally, the building design is intended to aim for that vibrant pedestrian experience. So along Martway, 75% of the frontage is devoted by those occupiable live-work spaces, the leasing office, those resident clubhouse amenities. The first floor of the facade also incorporates that large expansive glass, really provides that visibility between the activity that's going on in the live-work units, making that visible to pedestrians on the street, which really engages the pedestrian, provides that sense of safety. There are also these little patios shown out here, the patios, the balconies, those serve as kind of outdoor living room. So encouraging either that direct or indirect social interactions, fostering that community connectedness. And then lastly, the proposed building is oriented to Martway Street. So it's built right up front on the trail, rather than having a parking lot separate the pedestrians from the activity within the building. So with this public realm concept, we're really thinking about the experience of someone walking along the trail and what would make this a vibrant and inviting experience for them. The plan also emphasizes the green infrastructure principle. So understanding that when the site was originally paved and originally developed, we paved over native plant material with concrete. It increased flooding potential, it put some pressure on the city's stormwater infrastructure. So this plan really calls for redevelopment that includes less impervious surface. The proposed site improvements would decrease the amount of impervious area on the site, converting about a half acre of current, like parking lot space into landscaping, recreational space, linear trail parks, the pocket parks, some more efficient use of space to really activate the community and provide that environmental benefit. That reduction of impervious surface would reduce peak stormwater runoff, which reduces flood risk, that decreases water pollution, and it decreases the volume of water that has to be handled by the city's stormwater infrastructure. So alleviating that a little bit. The plan also calls for water quality. The open space is expected to provide a water quality benefit. Additionally, there's some structural stormwater BNP treatments proposed to improve water quality. So these are elements that are engineered specifically to manage stormwater for quality treatment. And then third here, we have the pedestrian-friendly environment. So the landscaping, the native trees, the shrubs, planting supposed for the site, these are kind of sustainable ways to create that aesthetically pleasing pedestrian environment, provide some shade, also trying to reduce those heat island effects. In the East Way redevelopment plan, the future land use map designates the Mission Bowl property as future mixed-use. Overall, the plan is calling for higher-density mixed-use development and urban housing. The Smart Move 3.0, this is the Kansas City's region's long-range plan for transit and mobility, the project of Mark and the agencies that provide transit to Mission residents and employees. The plan includes recommendations that cities can consider if they want to support healthy transit in their community. That Mission Transit Center right across the street from the proposed development is designated as a mobility hub within the regional, which is within the region. It's a converging point for public transit. It also means that this is in a place of intensive, like, concentration of working, living... like concentration of working, living, shopping, playing, usually in the form of mixed use development. So in order to support that healthy transit and support those transportation options within the community, the plan recommends that cities consider density and mixed uses near mobility hubs. It also recommends affordable and multi-housing options near mobility hubs. It cautions against excessive amount of vehicle parking, wanting to make that efficient use of space, not wanting to provide space that ends up going empty. Also recommending bike parking for residents and employees. So the, as Banks mentioned, the apartment building would include that temporary outdoor bicycle parking racks, also long-term indoor bicycle storage for the residents, and then a bicycle repair station for residents. And then last, the plan considers, the plan suggests considering how well the site integrates with the surrounding transportation options. So with the Mission Transit Center, the Rock Creek Trail, walkable access to the downtown, it makes it really well connected to bicycle, pedestrian, and transit facilities. So those, that is what our master plans tell us about what the community's vision is for the property. Moving into the zoning code review here, the property is in the Main Street 2 zoning district. This is intended to provide development that's consistent with the existing character surrounding the core of downtown Mission. It really echoes, it really echoes the plans in encouraging that active streetscape, pedestrian-friendly shopping environment, restricted audio, auto-oriented uses. The district also really intends to support businesses in the downtown area by encouraging residential and office uses to bring people in to patronize those businesses. So in general, the zoning code will give you regulations on permitted uses, height, area, parking. The application complies with the majority of these conventional zoning stipulations and also requests three deviations in accordance with the standards for the planned zoning district. The Main Street 2 district is a planned zoning district. So these districts are really meant to encourage innovative, imaginative development that supports the vision of the community as outlined in those master plans, wanting to allow deviations when that deviation would result in a development that really exceeds the quality of a project that would be developed under the conventional zoning. So that's the flexibility that's provided there. These are kind of the two criteria we can look at as we review the deviations, and the same criteria that the planning commission reviewed as well, wanting the deviation to result in greater quality project and also a project that more closely aligns with the community vision that's outlined in those master plans. And that's why we review the plan so thoroughly to begin with. So the first deviation being permitted uses, that conventional zoning allows residents that are part of a commercial or office building. So it, it kind of stipulates that this would be mixed use. Because the proposed building is primarily residential, without that traditional office or retail use, it would require a deviation. The application talks a little bit about today's shifting retail and office environment, and Banks touched on that a little bit too, with the shift of working towards, working from home, you know, online shopping, is there that need to provide the office or retail spaces here? You know, what to do in a situation like COVID? The application really desires to support the existing downtown businesses rather than compete with them. So when we do evaluate whether this proposed deviation would result in that higher quality project that better aligns with the community plans, we can go back and consider what the master plans tell us. So one goal of the Main Street 2 district is to support the businesses in the downtown area with residential uses. The comprehensive plan envisions that the property would develop into medium density apartments with accessory live work spaces. And the comprehensive plan intends for the property to serve as that transition zone between the existing single family residences to the south and those higher intensity uses at the Mission Mart and Security Bank to the north. So additionally, proposed building uses some techniques from the Johnson Drive Design Guidelines to really mimic that pedestrian friendly experience of a mixed use development. So the leasing office, the resident workspaces, those, that, those business center types of uses, those are proposed for the ground floor behind that clear glass storefront appearance. We, we were working with Banks, talking about the community's desire to have that active pedestrian friendly street, and the live work units were added to the project on the first floor here. And Banks, again, touched on this a little bit, but having that live work unit be that single unit consisting of the workspace and also the residential space, and both spaces would be occupied by the same tenant. It's really kind of this old idea that's been modernized to meet the needs of entrepreneurs, small businesses, professionals. In the past, a live work unit often meant that a storekeeper would live in the apartment above their little shop. So this application proposes a more contemporary version of this, approximately seven live work units fronting on the Rock Creek Trail in Martway here. And then the next deviation, height and density. So conventional zoning would allow the building to be three stories or 45 feet in height, and would allow approximately 111 apartment units on the 3.15 acre property. The deviation requested is to allow the building to be five stories in height and up to 61 feet in height, and allow the building to have up to 168 units on the property. So again, looking at what the community's plans tell us, the East Gateway Plan calls for that higher density development and urban housing options. The regional transit plan suggests density near the Mission Transit Center. The Johnson Drive Design Guidelines offer techniques to kind of complement the proportion and scale of the surrounding area. For example, the building is designed to reduce its perceived height by dividing the building mass into smaller scale components, such as where you see those live work units accentuated along Martway. The comprehensive plan envisions the property, again, as this transition zone between a higher intensity development to the north and a low density residential to the south. So to the left of the screen, we have the high intensity Security Bank, it's about 95 feet, cell tower being about 160 feet tall. The transition zone being this property, the proposed building is about 58 to 61 feet tall. And then the low intensity areas to the south. You can see here with the elevation, with this rendering, that the ground floor of the residences is actually about 30 feet, give or take, above the ground floor of the Mission Bowl property. So making those roof lines align a little bit here. And this building shown here is on 60th Terrace, a two-story home on that street. And the comprehensive plan also envisions this medium density development with floor area ratio of between one and three. So the application proposes a floor area ratio of 1.05. It's nearly the lowest density floor area ratio that would still conform to the comprehensive plan. Development on the lower end of the target far range has the least potential to be intrusive to adjacent residences. Additionally, a minimum floor area ratio of one without height deviation would require the building to actually cover more of the lot, leaving insufficient room for other site elements. So for example, parking, if the building covered more of the lot, a deviation for parking would likely be necessary to achieve the target floor area ratio specified in the comprehensive plan. The application's proposing that sufficient parking in exchange for the height deviation. And the same concept applies to the proposed parks, office space, landscaping. Without that height deviation, these elements, the open space landscaping elements, wouldn't be included to the extent that they're proposed today. And that would have a secondary effect, increasing the impervious surfaces with the building covering more of the lot, having that negative impact on stormwater management. Additionally, if the building did cover more of the lot, it would bring it closer to the residences, closer to the flood plain, and closer to the creek to the south of the property, which are all things we're, we're trying to stay away from. Right now, the building really sits up on Martway, and without the height deviation to achieve the far specified in the comp plan, it would have to come closer to the back of the property. There was a traffic impact study created by an engineering firm. This, sorry, this Main Street zoning district 2, this is just to say that the application is showing compliance with the rest of the sections of the code, parking setbacks, landscaping, lighting, signs, the design guidelines. I can go into any of these more in detail if anyone wants to, but I won't go into them in the same detail as the deviations, since it's just complying with the regulations as is. And here we have the traffic impact study. So an engineering firm did complete a traffic impact study in order to kind of assess the impact of the proposed development on the surrounding transportation system. All intersections were projected to operate at an acceptable level of service, and no capacity improvements were identified to mitigate the addition of development traffic to the street network. GBA, the engineering firm on behalf of the city, also kind of pointed out that in a lot of instances, particularly weekends or evenings, the proposed residential development would create less traffic demand than the former bowling alley and the miniature golf course that used to be there. The stormwater report, additionally, an engineered stormwater report was created by, as part of the application and reviewed by GBA on behalf of the city. There were some recommendations that came out of that that are kind of detailed in the staff report. Happy to go into anything in more detail. And the staff, or the stormwater report will be added to as we move into the final development plan application if the application is approved today. So overall, based on the findings of studies, the consistencies with the city's master plan, the intent of the city code, staff did recommend that planning commission forward the application onto the city council with a recommendation of approval with the conditions listed in the staff report. The planning commission voted eight to zero to recommend that the city council does approve the preliminary development plan with the conditions listed in the staff report. And based on the city code today, the city council can take one of the actions listed here. So adopting the planning commission recommendation, overriding the planning commission recommendation with a two-thirds vote of the city council, or returning that recommendation back to the planning commission with a request for more information or clarification about the recommendation and why they made that recommendation. So that concludes my presentation. Happy to turn it back over and answer any questions. Thanks.
I have a question.
All right, hang on a second. Why don't we go ahead and I would entertain a motion? And then with that motion, then we can have discussion.
Mayor, I move that the city council adopt an ordinance approving a preliminary development plan with stipulations for the construction of a multifamily housing development at 5399 Martway Street in the city of Mission, Kansas, Mission Bowl Apartments LLC applicant. And this was the planning commission case number 20-03.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Discussion, Debbie.
I have a couple of questions. Number one, when we're looking at design guidelines in concert with zoning requirements and the comprehensive master plan, how does the affordability for multifamily fit into this, this development?
Yeah, that's a great. Oh, yeah, that's a, that's a great question. So with, with just the zoning and the preliminary development plan process, you're mostly looking at, you know, the building structure, the site plan, the amount of parking that's proposed. There's nothing in city admission zoning code that would like, either encourage or discourage affordable housing at this point in time. The regional transit plan does comment on affordable housing, noting that people with lower incomes are more likely to rely on, you know, cheaper modes of transportation and locating affordable housing right next to those mobility hubs opens up a lot of opportunities for jobs, for traveling to school, really expanding that radius of travel and therefore expanding that radius of opportunity for people who are able to live next to frequent transit and those mobility hubs where there's that converging of public transit. But with the preliminary development plan, you're really, right now, looking at like the building, the building site plan, the parking, the height, the, the density, that type of thing to see if it fits within the community. Brian, do you want to chime in to, to comment on when affordable housing discussions would be integrated into the process?
You're, you're correct in that land use, the zoning regulations speak to land use. They don't necessarily speak to the market rate for apartments or the commercial piece of property, the rent rates for retail, or in case maybe. If, if that's a goal that the city council would like to consider for future land use applications, that's certainly something we can discuss during the comprehensive plan update, which we're going through right now. And something that could be a recommendation that comes out of that process and developed in some form or fashion in future updates to the line of these regulations. For this particular project, they are requesting incentives. And so we have started some discussions with them around for requirements for those incentives, what we'd like to see as a community as a trade-off for those incentives, and affordability is on that list.
I, I'm really envisioning our comprehensive master plan including that as a component. I think across the United States, but primarily in the Kansas City area, I think affordability falls into, I would say, a requirement by local municipalities to start looking at affordability outside the great situation, but anyway.
A strong recommendation that comes out of the comprehensive land use update to consider options or opportunities for affordable housing in the future.
Okay. My next question is for Banks. You had two council members talk to you about potential change in the color, and you had me requesting any kind of change in the design with additional materials added in. Have we, is that off the board now, or?
No, we'll go back through and, and the final development plan, we'll continue to, to seek feedback and make those changes. Debbie, I think when we spoke, it was two or three days prior to this in the middle of the PDP for planning, but, but we are absolutely going to continue to seek feedback. After this meeting, that feedback does not stop by any stretch of the imagination.
Thank you.
Yep.
Eric, it looks like Hillary made a question in the chat.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. I was hoping I could maybe start with Caitlin or Brian regarding the live work units. And I'm wondering if there is flexibility for us after, you know, before the final development agreement to, you know, kind of further, potentially further restrict prohibitions surrounding the live work units. And I'm, I'm really just more curious about some of the logistics of, you know, the business licensing and, and partnering with the management group and, and kind of what that looks like because it's such a new concept. And so along those lines, you know, do we envision the city at some point having a live work, you know, element of our code describing, you know, what a live work unit is and what should go along with it?
I would think so. Again, that would be a recommendation that might come out of the comp plan update that would be further refined or zoning codes that more clearly defines what that type of space might look like for future developments. I think, you know, for this particular project, it really kind of depends on what the renter's going to do. If, for example, an architect is going to actually operate a small, kind of one-person architectural firm out of that lower space, that's from Martway, getting with clients or colleagues, working in various projects. I believe that is something that requires a business. I believe that is something that requires a business license from the city. So they have to obtain a business license. And they lift to comply with all business regulations of the city. If it's somebody's maybe a consultant that's kind of renting a home, doing a lot of travel, something that doesn't really require a business license, then that would be the case. We probably worked with the, uh, the management of that development. To kind of keep everybody abreast of the requirements for use of those spaces. What regulations are placed, what types of businesses and what require business licenses, things of that nature.
Yeah, yeah, that's helpful. I, I'd like to, you know, later on dig in a little bit more about what that looks like, um, before the final development agreement. And then along the same lines, you mentioned working with the management group and Banks. I was hoping you could share a little bit more. I think the planning commission asked about, uh, the development group and it sounds like you guys outsourced to a, a shared partnership group that you all have. I believe it's first management. Is that the group that we can anticipate working with?
That, that is correct.
Okay. And, and do they have any other management groups in Kansas City? I know you mentioned upcoming for the Uptown Lofts, but currently do they?
Um, this would be, the Uptown Lofts will be their first management in Kansas City, but they've got management in Albuquerque, uh, Colorado. I mean, they, so they've, they've expanded outside of Lawrence. And so, um, they're very familiar with the process. They're a, a very good management company. Um, but yes, it is to your point. It is something that we do outsource. Um, and we do fully anticipate the first management. And they do have a retailer office management component, which I think will play in nicely with these live work units um, as we monitor what type of businesses in there.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question is just Brian, if you could just, um, elaborate a little bit more in the planning commission. Um, some of the residents' concerns about, uh, privacy or height. I know some of them have already been addressed and redesigned, but, um, you know, I, I wasn't able to be in the planning commission meeting. So if you could just a li- a little bit more specifically, see if you think those residents have, um, now feel comfortable with where the project is.
I think generally, yes. Um, we had, um, at the planning commission meeting, I'm trying to think, I think we had four individuals that actually spoke regards to the project. Um, one individual, Mr. I know I'm going to put his last name, so I apologize, but Choisy, Ben Choisy.
Ben Choisy actually indicated in chat that he would like, like a comment.
Yeah, so he's a resident that actually lives in that house directly behind the project. Like Caitlin pointed out on her diagram during her presentation. You know, another gentleman, um, Mr. Glenn Grant, who's also a resident on Sixty-first Terrace. He was concerned namely with, uh, traffic going through the neighborhood. He thought that this project might on a combination of the Gateway Project generate kind of cut through traffic on his street. Our traffic engineer spoke to that during the planning, please, and planning commission meeting. Um, that's something that at some point in near future, I'm going to speak with Celia about actually doing traffic counts on that street right now before these projects materialize. It's kind of a baseline. And then in a few years after these projects have materialized, we'll go back and do traffic counts again to see if that's actually the case. And if there is an issue, there are things that we can do to slow down the traffic or kind of deter traffic. Um, access for folks that are walking, um, using a dog park and maybe walking the neighborhood is a local concern if it is, or not bring them. Then I think there was one gentleman, it might've been Mr. Grant as well, that was a little bit concerned about the lighting. Um, and that's something that we'll visit and find in the development plan, that all the things that, you know, plans of for staff review, planning commission consideration. We spoke a little bit about that there are a lot of development projects today use LED lighting. And the LED lighting is very directed down over the parking surface. And so you just don't see a lot of light pollution, particularly with some of the, even desert type of lights. But if we provide a photometric plan for us, we bring back the final development plan. That's something that our engineer will look at as well. So those are some of the concerns.
Can I just add to that too, that a lot of the traffic concerns related to vehicle traffic were associated with the Gateway Project, um, not with this project. The traffic that will be directed to this Mission Bowl site is more anticipated to come from the arterial streets that are already, um, built with the capacity to handle that. So, um, you know, shiny Mission Parkway, Noll, Roland Drive, Martway, Johnson Drive. So a lot of those comments about vehicle traffic were, you know, digging back up the Gateway Study um, and digging back through those traffic study documents. Um, and the engineers on the call and to review the study didn't really anticipate vehicle traffic being an impact on Sixtieth Terrace. Um, the gentleman Glenn Grant, um, was, a lot of these concerns were related to if someone from the apartment was walking their dog, if they would take that trail from Martway to go back to Sixtieth Terrace. There's no sidewalks on that street, um, and being concerned about pedestrian safety there. I think that's a good point, um, that there's sidewalks missing in a lot of residential areas in the city. Um, and that could be an impact to someone walking their dog or walking for exercise. Um, when we do look at trips that are not destination trips, like dog walking was one that he really highlighted, um, since there's a dog park proposed here. A person who lived at that apartment complex could walk their dog anywhere in the city. Um, they don't have to go to a street that didn't have sidewalks. Ideally, there'd be a sidewalk for them to walk on in any direction. Um, but, you know, on the contrary of that, if someone living in that apartment complex needed to walk to the hardware store, they would pretty much have to walk down Martway and go over to Noll and then turn onto Johnson Drive. All that route has a sidewalk. Uh, on the contrary, if someone's walking their dog, um, they could choose a route with a sidewalk or they could decide that they are comfortable walking in the street. So, um, I think that, that can, that was more of the concern, just to clarify around the, the traffic concerns. The vehicle traffic was associated with the Gateway. The dog walking was associated with the Sixtieth Terrace. Um, and there were, yeah, concerns about the lighting, um, which if approved today, if this moves forward, um, the final development plan would include that photometric engineered, um, lighting plan. So the lighting is actually really controllable on the site. Twenty twenty technology, um, you can actually create an, a site plan that shows the foot candle of all the lighting onto the site, making sure it's not causing that glare onto the residents. So, um, that's something that we'll have more information on and something that we'll be keeping a very close watch on too, um, if this goes forward.
Do you have a comment?
Uh, yes. Um, my name's Ben Choisy. My address is in the chat box. I've commented at the planning hearing and at the community development committee. Um, so I'll be brief here. You've, you've heard most of what I have to say, but I do support the proposal. My wife and I live directly behind where that house, uh, in that house pictured in the elevation drawing in the slideshow. Um, we love the idea of seeing this, this, uh, multifamily density come to Mission, help revitalize Johnson Drive. I think that's great. Yeah, some of the neighbors were worried about, uh, cut through traffic and I do think that's probably more of a gateway thing, like the traffic engineer said, but we, you know, certainly welcome, you know, sidewalks and, and traffic calming, um, if and when that happens. But yeah, I, I, I think the height deviation is appropriate given the elevation. We're really staring off of quite a bit of a drop off in our backyard. So it's really going to help the height deviation quite a bit. I think it's, it's a little bit frustrating that the, the F A R requirements are sort of, I guess, kind of in conflict with the height requirements. And I wonder if council might revisit some of that, that zoning to, to sort of bring that together, because I think that makes it so that a lot of these proposals basically require variance. But, uh, long story short, we, you know, we've supported this, this proposal for, since we've heard about it and I've given most of my reasons before. So I'll just, I'll leave it at that. I hope you'll, uh, uphold the, the planning commission's recommendation. Thanks.
Right. Any other comments, questions?
I have one.
Trent.
Uh, this question's for Banks and the team. We had spoken before about kind of some renewable energy options empowering the site. And I don't know if this is too, uh, in it, you know, preliminary to kind of get into that, but has there been further discussions on those fronts and sort of like a green space on the roof even is some of those ideas we had kind of bounced around?
Yeah, we, um, councilman, yeah, we, we have, we've actually submitted our sustainability, um, report that we will present October fourth, I believe, um, which will include some of that information. But Connor, I may let you talk a little bit, um, about some of the things that'll be incorporated um, into this project outside of windows, LED lighting, some of those things.
Sure. So yeah, as a, as a firm, um, as an architecture firm, aside from, um, our development projects, we have, um, we've committed to this, uh, twenty thirty, the year twenty thirty, um, initiative to make, excuse me, all of our buildings more sustainable, as sustainable as they can possibly be. And they all go through sort of a rigorous evaluation program, um, uh, using different computer modeling software. Um, so we're going to go through that with this project. Um, we're going to find every um, area of sustainable design that we can incorporate into the project, um, that makes the project possible still. Um, renewable energy, uh, will be one that's evaluated. Um, but every time we go through one of these, um, it's, you know, it's a push and pull of finding, finding the right, uh, programs to incorporate. But we're certainly evaluating it.
Thanks.
Anybody else? All right, hearing none. Um, Audrey, please call for the vote.
Flora. Aye. Inman.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Fulton House.
Aye.
Rothrock.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
And Thomas.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carried.
All right, that concludes item six.
Thank you, everybody.
Yes, thank you. Um, moving on to item seven, committee reports. Could we hear from Finance Administration, Debbie Crane?
Thank you, Mayor. The Finance and Administration Committee met on September second and continued the racial equality conversation under public presentations, as well as considered one item, which was the acceptance of the meeting minutes. There are no additional items for consideration on tonight's regular agenda.
All right, thank you. Moving on to community, community development, council member Flora.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The Community Development Committee also met on September second and discussed the preliminary development plan for fifty-three ninety-nine Martway Street, which was considered under the planning commission item. In addition, the acceptance of the meeting minutes were reviewed. There are no additional items for council's consideration on our regular agenda tonight. That concludes.
All right, thank you. Um, moving on to item eight, unfinished business. We do not have any, so we'll move on to item nine, which is new business. And we do have one item to be considered under new business, which is the city of Mission State of Emergency Disaster Proclamation related to COVID nineteen. Ms. Smith.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, council will remember that back in March, we issued a State Emergency Disaster Proclamation, uh, March thirteenth, twenty twenty, to be exact, um, which we have since amended on March eighteenth, April first, April fifteenth, May thirteenth, July, and July fifteenth. Um, the primary purpose originally of the emergency disaster proclamation is to allow us the ability to have eligible expenses reimbursed typically through FEMA in the event of a situation like the COVID pandemic. Um, as, as this has, um, gone on over the last several months, there has been, uh, federal funding that has been allocated to this. FEMA is somewhat out of the picture. And we are working through processes with Johnson County to look at reimbursement, um, of those expenses. Um, but the other thing that this really does is, is regardless of where the dollars are coming from, coming through a federal agency, it provides us just, I think, a broad umbrella of protection to ensure that we're positioned to be able to not have any questions raised about whether we would be eligible, um, and able to accept reimbursement of these dollars. So we had previously back in July extended our emergency, uh, proclamation through this evening. Um, we were under a similar emergency order, um, that was issued by the governor that actually expired yesterday or was set to expire on September fifteenth. Last Friday on the eleventh, the state finance council met and approved the governor's request for an extension of that emergency orders for an additional thirty days through October fifteenth, twenty twenty. Um, that extension also impacted a number of, um, the executive orders that were previously issued by the governor. We, um, wanted to bring this back to you this evening and we are recommending that we continue to extend our proclamation uh, as long as we are pursuing reimbursement of any funding either through FEMA. Excuse me, either through FEMA or through the CARES Act. And just because of the alignment of our council meeting dates, um, they don't, they don't line up well with the governor's extension date. So we are recommending that we extend our proclamation through October twenty first, twenty twenty, and that would coincide with your regular, uh, October legislative meeting. Um, at our October seventh committee meeting, you'll be hearing, uh, a fairly extensive update on the CARES funding. We've been spending a lot of time as most of the other cities in the county have been, working through reimbursement allocations, um, of that CARES Act funding. There, there was, um, approximately, I think I had thrown out a number previously of about fifty million dollars. The actual allocation to cities within the county uh, is about seventeen million dollars total. And that was, um, divided on a pro rata share based on population. The city of Mission, uh, has been assigned at this point roughly three hundred and some odd thousand dollars of CARES Act funding. Uh, we have, um, submitted a phase one request, which was reimbursement for P P E, uh, additional cleaning supplies and other things that we purchased from March through really the end of July, first part of August. And we have actually been reimbursed about twenty-two thousand dollars. Last month, we were asked, all of the cities were asked to submit sort of our wish list items, um, things that we would do going forward to help mitigate impacts, um, of a pandemic situation. And, uh, those were reviewed by the county's consultant, um, and were assigned either determined to be eligible or not eligible, and then assigned a audit risk, uh, priority, high, medium, or low. And so we will be sharing with you all, um, so how, how we would propose to spend, uh, the remaining, you know, two hundred and eighty, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, um, that we have available to us in that county CARES Act funding. Um, one of the biggest challenges being the fact that it has to be actually expended by December thirtieth of this year. So all of that being said, um, we have a lot of work in the months ahead. Um, but at least for now, we think it makes sense for us to continue to extend our emergency declaration.
I would entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that the city council approve the extension of the city of Mission's State of Emergency Disaster Proclamation related to COVID nineteen through October twenty first, twenty twenty.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this topic? Seeing none, Audrey, please call for the vote.
Thomas.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Rothrock.
Aye.
Fulton House.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Inman.
Aye.
And Flora.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you.
All right, that concludes item nine. Moving on to item ten, comments from city council. This is an opportunity for comments from our council members. Does anyone have anything they would like to share?
Mayor, I have one.
Trent.
Uh, Hillary and I will be hosting the Ward one meeting, our next scheduled Ward one meeting on October twenty ninth.
All right, thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, uh, Ward three will host a meeting on the fifteenth of October at seven, seven PM. And at this point in time, it's at the community center, but we'll, we'll adjust it based on pandemic issues.
All right. Anybody else?
Mayor, I just wanted to, uh, say that we really appreciated the, uh, award ceremony for the police that were held just. for the police that were held just uh, last week. It really was uh, very impressive, and uh, we have some really great uh, police officers who are commended for the work that they've done. Thank you.
All right, hearing nothing else, then we will move on to item 11, mayor's report. I do not have one, so let's go to, well, city administrators' report.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'm gonna run through a couple of things quickly, and then I will touch on our August interim financial reports, which is a new addition to our council packets. Uh, just a reminder that um, we have kicked off our uh, update to the comprehensive plan. Um, and we have our first uh, public workshop, which will be held virtually on October 1st at 6:30 PM. So watch for more information and the link uh, to that meeting. Um, and some, some great opportunities to interact with a new website and, and share ideas and thoughts for the future of our city. Uh, a couple of um, fun events coming up. Um, kudos to the Parks and Recreation Department for um, continuing to try to plan how to get people out and active and engaged with one another in these um, crazy times, but we will be having a fall into funds, sort of drive-through, goodie bag pickup event on um, the 1st of October at the community center from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. We have a spooky walk, although we're advertising it as not too spooky, at Streamway Park on October 2nd from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And then Halloween, which I believe is a uh, dog costume contest, which is scheduled on the 24th of October from 9:00 to 11:00 at Anderson Park. Um, also just a reminder that we do have a uh, work session scheduled for September 30th. Um, I would actually, perhaps, Mayor, I'm not sure, we, we should probably make a motion if the council would like to hold that starting at 6:30 as opposed to 7:00, because by ordinance, our work session times are um, are slated to begin at 7:00, but we will have that work session um, the first of probably two or three that we will have on our, on revamping our street um, program. I also echo Councilmember Davis's uh, kudos and compliments on the award ceremony for the Police Department. Uh, last Friday, it was very nice and a great opportunity to honor the service um, of the men and women of our department, and thanks to our interim chief, Dan Madden, for his um, excellent um, presentation and um, just work on pulling all of that together. Um, so I might, I might stop there before I jump into the financial report, if you would consider a motion on that work session.
Right. Could we have a motion to move the 9, the September 30th work session from 7:00 to 6:30?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Audrey, call for the vote.
Sorry, probably helped by unmuted. Uh, Bolton House.
Aye.
Rothrock.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Edman.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Flora.
Aye.
And Davis.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Ms. Smith?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. So, uh, a couple of months ago, we had some requests to look at um, spending a little bit more time, perhaps creating uh, more of an executive summary of our monthly interim financial reports, so that we could, could kind of keep those front and center uh, of the council more than just um, in the months of June, July, and August, when we are um, really focused on our annual budget development. So, we have produced um, monthly interim financial reports forever, I think, um, and we have typically, well, those are, are posted out on our website and have been made available publicly. Uh, but we haven't um, really spent a lot of time or any time making a big to-do over them or, or touching on the information. So tonight, I'd like to just kind of share with you what we've put together as a first start. I expect that this will kind of morph over time, um, as we become more comfortable or, and, and talk about these issues or share this more regularly, as you have questions, or as we internally as a leadership team um, get a, a greater feel for what we might want to share with you. So tonight, what I thought I would do is just sort of hit the highlights and then kind of um, share with you what the report, the report content, it's sort of where to go, uh, connect the dots, if you will, just a little bit um, to help you, if you're interested in going back and looking at interim financial reports, if you can't sleep sometime, it's a great way to put yourself to sleep. Um, but uh, to just sort of share that. And so I have to say that a lot of this information, I added a few new charts and graphs, but a lot of this information has been out there um, in every monthly interim financial report um, that we've posted. It, you just had to dig your way through the report sometimes to find it. Um, so with that, um, the first thing that we've included, if we look at um, kind of the first page of the executive summary, is a general fund revenue summary by category. Uh, we, we updated this chart from the previous monthly interim financials, so that it will going forward show an adopted budget and then an estimated budget. You may remember that when we went through the budget process this past summer, we made some pretty significant changes to revenue estimates in 2020 because of the estimated impacts of COVID. So we want to be able to show not only what the original budget was, but then the estimated budget or any revisions uh, that we've made. Then you'll see a month-to-date and a year-to-date collection, and then the percent of the estimated budget um, that has been collected. Um, this aligns generally with the categories, the way you see them in your budget book. Uh, we've got a few additional sort of modification and tweaks to make, so that it will be a cleaner look between the workbook that you see as a part of your budget process in this monthly interim financial. Uh, but I think we got pretty close uh, with this report. Um, then I just took the opportunity to highlight here uh, sales tax, because it is um, one of our largest revenue streams in the general fund, and obviously um, can be dramatically impacted by changes in the economy. Um, I am pleased to report that we continue to sort of hold our own on sales tax collections. Um, so that's a real positive. Um, it, when we look at our general city sales tax, which is the 1% city sales tax, uh, we've included a chart that will just kind of show you a monthly comparison um, from 2019 to 2020, month of, month to month or month over month. Um, we estimated collections of that 1% sales tax of just over 2.1 million. We've collected 1.4 million to date, so 66% of that budget has been collected. Um, at, through the month of August, we're at 67% of our fiscal year expended, so we are right on track there. Our change year over year, you'll see just slightly um, less than a 1% decrease, um, but compared to the five-year average, um, we are up at this point uh, almost 12 and a half percent. And on the next page, the other thing that we looked at related to sales tax um, is our general use tax. Um, and uh, as you can see here, total estimated budget is just over 1.1 million. We've collected about 762,000 of that, or 69%. So, use tax is actually trending a little bit ahead of um, our budgeted estimates. Uh, our percent change year over year, we're up 12 and a half percent. Um, and we're up 20, uh, over 25% when compared to the five-year average. So, we'll probably go back and show um, that five-year average as a trend line across this bar graph, just to help kind of track some of those kinds of things. But um, city sales and use tax continues to hold steady. We're not seeing the declines that we originally anticipated when the 2021 budget was adopted. Other Johnson County cities are reporting similar trends with sales tax revenues. Uh, our county sales tax, which I did not um, do any charts for, is lagging slightly uh, a, a little over 4% behind uh, last year, and use, but their kind of use tax revenues are trending higher than our budget estimates by about 13 and a half percent when compared year over year. So we will continue to monitor the sales tax and adjust, um, should we see any changes uh, in those trends, if they start to slow or sort of reverse. The chart at the bottom of the second page, um, our revenues, expenditures, and then cash and investment balances across all of the funds or the major funds that are included in our budget. So you'll see um, general fund, um, court, special alcohol, stormwater, equipment reserve, capital fund, et cetera, all those ones that we talk about when we go through the annual budget process. And what we've shown you here is the revenue budget um, uh, as originally adopted, revenue year-to-date, the amount of revenue that's uncollected in any particular fund. And then we're showing you also um, the expenses uh, and any unencumbered balance. And then you can kind of see that final column will show you our sort of cash on hand or cash balances, both uh, in the MIP, which is the municipal investment pool that is managed by the state of Kansas. Um, and you can see that as of August 31st, 2020, we have 11 and a half million dollars uh, in cash on hand, if you will, um, in those accounts. Um, some of the other uh, financial reports that I was looking at, I've gone back and looked at a variety of different cities, and again, I will beg, borrow, and steal what we think makes sense for us, but many of them were showing these revenues, expenses, and cash balances on separate tables, and I feel like being able to see that snapshot for us by fund um, is helpful to see it all in one place. One thing that I will, will um, share with you though, is you'll see in that far left-hand column, you'll see a fund number. And when we get to the rest of the report, we don't talk about um, externally very often our fund numbers. They don't show up particularly um, in the budget process, uh, but the monthly interim financial reports, or at least the way that the reports are generated, the detailed reports that are coming out of our system, um, are driven by these fund numbers. So this is a helpful resource for you. Uh, it's also, I'll show you on those reports, you can see it, but if you want that kind of quick and dirty um, look at, you know, what is a particular fund number, uh, this will be readily available. The next page of the report really looks at general fund expenditures by department. Uh, and so this breaks it down, that general fund, which as, as we all know, is our largest uh, fund and um, has the, the most significant cash inflows and outflows over the course of a year. So we, we, again, we added um, here, this is a chart that has, has been available in the monthly reports. Um, we have the budget column, then we have the estimated budget. So any revisions that we made when we went through the 2021 budget process, you'll see month-to-date expenditures, year-to-date expenditures, amount remaining, and then an estimated expenditure rate. So you'll be able, you see that by department, by um, category, like we look at them in uh, our budget workbook, personnel, contractual commodities, and capital. And then there's a column, or there's a line at the bottom of this page, which is other general fund expenses, and those are the transfers to the other funds. So the transfer that we make of the seven mils from the general fund to the capital improvement fund for street maintenance, and then the transfer that we make to the solid waste utility fund. And as I sit here, I see that I need to add an asterisk to that, and probably would be helpful going forward to explain um, what, what that means. Then on the last page of the executive summary, you'll just kind of see represented more graphically, a departmental summary. Um, the red line represents where we are uh, in relation to the fiscal year and what percent of the fiscal year is expended. So again, about 67% of the year. And then this is just a quick uh, reference to look at um, you know, by department, how everyone is trending in relationship to, you know, where we are in the fiscal year. So with the exception of administration, um, and the outdoor pool, everyone is trending at or below where they should be in um, the course of this year. I will tell you, for example, in administration, um, we are trending a, slightly above the line, because we had a long-tenured employee who retired earlier this year, and um, by policy, we pay out accrued vacation, a portion of accrued vacation and sick leave. So that is what is driving administration being over that trend line. The pool, we took away the budget. So if you flip back to the page before, you look at the page before, the M-FAC actually has zero budget, so any dollars that actually get spent there are going to put us over that budget line. And right now, um, we, we had some um, expenses for replacement of a, a water heater and some other things that happened before we made the decision to not open the pool. And then the water that we use in keeping the spray ground facility open is charged to that account. So that's why you see kind of that um, really significant uh, surge there. Um, as I mentioned, this is just the first, our first attempt to sort of summarize and highlight some of the financial reports. Uh, we'll continue to refine and develop that in the coming months. Um, you know, so if you, if, as we go through this process, if there are things that you would like for us to track or trend, um, I, I, I think, uh, I, I will add eventually some information on some of our other more significant revenue streams, whether that is um, fines and forfeitures, community center revenues, or Parks and Recreation revenues, that will help us, some of the things that we looked at in this uh, 2021 budget process, so that we've got sort of that consistent look throughout the year, um, and we're not taking a first look at it when we get to our 2022 budget process next year. I will tell you just overall, um, again, sales tax is trending um, as we better than anticipated, uh, Parks and Recreation revenues at this point are trending worse than we had anticipated. Um, we're seeing an improvement month to month. Uh, but Penn and I have been working um, for the last couple of weeks, just really trying to dig in and understand, and we'll continue again to bring that to you, and if we need to make additional adjustments um, as a result of the revenue trends in Parks and Recreation, we will certainly bring those recommendations forward. If you look at all of the rest of the, um, I don't know, 50 some odd pages, I think, or more, uh, what you'll see is these are the um, reports that come straight from our government or our financial management software system. And the first set of reports that you see will be month-end revenue reports. So by fund and at a line-item level detail, you will be able to see um, month-to-date and year-to-date revenues. So for example, you can kind of see, uh, on the first page of the revenue report, it's the general fund, and if you look at the top, you're gonna have O1 um, and, and your general fund. So you flip through, you, you're, you're able to look at um, detail on the revenue uh, by each fund. Then you move into an appropriation or expense report for each fund by line-item detail. Then finally, in, as you get towards the back of that, after page 59 of the appropriation and expense report, you see a claims uh, memo. And really what this does is it just is going to show you by fund the expenses that we have incurred um, and, and, and paid out of these, these funds. Um, and then the last report that is included here is a paid payment schedule by vendor. So in effect, this is our checkbook. Um, so you can see alphabetically uh, any and all um, checks that were written uh, or accounts payable that were, were managed. What this doesn't reflect is a journal entry. So if uh, we did a wire transfer, or we did a journal entry, it may not be reflected in, in this uh, section of the report. So we'll probably want to dig in a little bit deeper and kind of share with you, um, you know, because we often um, pay some of our larger expenses on capital projects and other things, um, not with a check traditionally. So we'll, as we kind of continue to, to work on this, we'll look at how we accurately can reflect those costs as well. So that's really all I have on the financial report. Um, again, as you have a chance to kind of look at this, think about it, um, if you have ideas or suggestions, please feel free to share those with us, and we will continue to um, see what we can do to improve that.
We have a question from Soli.
Yes, thank you. Uh, well, I was wondering if you could speak to that um, community center deep dive, and at what point we'd be talking about adjusting our 2021 projections as well as 2020?
Well, I mean, I think we're gonna have to be back. Um, you know, the You know, the, a, a couple of things where I think, obviously, we're seeing a dramat, a very dramatic impact in rental revenues because of the gathering limit sizes. And so if you look at in that line-item detail report, I think we had typically been bringing in about two hundred and twenty-five to two hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year on rental income. And we are really not seeing any of that. And in fact, we've refunded quite a bit of money from, you know, from our, both our long-term rentals and, and people who had the facility rental rented. So I think we've got to think about exploring ways to use that space that might generate revenue. That's one of the things we're talking about, ways to use that space that could generate revenue that would still allow people to use that space safely. In, in this instance, the other thing that I think we're, that we're looking at is, you know, we've reinstated, we suspended taking membership dues when the facility was closed. We reinstated membership dues when the facility reopened. We had a peak. We had our highest day attendance one of the days last week with over three hundred or right at about three hundred members, but that's still only about a third of what we were seeing through the facility in the course of a, of a given day pre-COVID. So the numbers are still low. But what we're finding is that with a significant portion of our members being on the insurance memberships, so we're paid, they don't pay directly. We're paid by their insurance provider based on the number of times that they come to our facility in a particular month. That, that's a population that has not returned at all. And so we're not seeing any, you know, any, any revenue from, from that. So I think we will this month, in this financial report, was really kind of our first full month since we reinstated membership dues. So we will continue to watch those trends. And I think we will have to be back in front of you, you know, either November or December with a more detailed update. And, you know, thinking about, are, are there other additional changes that, that we need to make? So it's just, unfortunately, with the lag sometimes in the way that the numbers come in, you know, and we, and we have to get that sense. And when you see it on paper, but we're going to have to keep a really close eye on that. I think if, if we trend, if, if we can't fix anything, I think we're going to miss our revised budget. So we were looking at bringing in about fifty percent less in revenues overall in Parks and Recreation for twenty-twenty. I think if we continue with revenues for the remaining sort of four months of the year, we're going to, we're going to miss that revenue estimate somewhere in the neighborhood of two hundred and fifty to two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So I think we're going to make that, more than make that up on the sales tax side and maybe in some other areas. But again, I think we're going to have to look at each sort of individual revenue stream or silo. And then what does that overall picture look like? And, you know, how, how can we balance? And how long can we balance and rely on certain things? So.
So that's after any reduction in expenses as well? Or is that just purely the revenue stream?
That's purely the revenue stream. I think revenues were a little trickier because in August, we make the revenues in the general fund looked a little bit high because we make debt service payments, so lease payments, and then debt service on the streetlight. So when, when we look at a debt service payment in the month of August, it always looks bigger. And so you have to try to back that out of what your monthly expenses might be. I think we're trending probably, I, I don't know. I, I think we're, we're trending still to, to do better than what we had projected in terms of expenses. So I, I don't know. I think we're going to be, I, I don't know what that delta is quite yet. I'm still trying to, still trying to, like I said, I think this, the, these financials just kind of landed on my desk last Friday, so I haven't had a whole lot of time to really dive into them. But this starts to give us a clearer picture than we've had up to this point this year.
Thank you.
Hillary, you got a question?
Yeah, just a follow-up to Solly's question, but along the same lines. And Laura, thank you so much for this report, by the way. I requested it and it's lovely. It's dense. But no, I really appreciated the executive summary. I think it's helpful for us to, to keep an eye on these things. But I, sometime down the line, as you mentioned, maybe in December before we get to twenty-twenty-one, I think being able to have some budget justification surrounding these numbers would be really helpful. I'd love to see the, particularly with the community center, I'd love to see what, how many memberships we've lost, how many refunds we've issued, you know, all those kind of data points that I think will piece together this a little bit more clearly for me as we think about a plan moving forward for twenty-twenty-one.
Okay.
All right, any other questions about financials? All right, couple reminders. Sustainability Commission is meeting Monday, October fifth at six thirty. And then the Mission Sidewalk Sale is this Saturday. Does that conclude your report, Laura?
I think it does. Other than if you didn't notice today, we had banners that went up along Johnson Drive. So I think they look really great. And it was, it'll be fun to have them up for the sidewalk sale this weekend.
And more banners to come. So they're not all the same polls, so it will be a little bit in phases. But we're working through getting, matching high-quality polls and banners for each section.
Just a note, I, I really appreciated the mission, a monthly report and the change. It looks nice. Thank you.
And on the, on the banners, will they be using recyclable materials so we can make bags out of them again?
You better believe I'm not letting any of those banners go in any kind of trash can, Debbie. When we phase them out, we get them back, for sure.
All right, moving on to item thirteen, executive session. We do not have a need for an executive session this evening. Before we adjourn tonight, I do want to share with the public that the video from this meeting will be available through a link on our website, missionks.org. There being, no further business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
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 We are adjourned.
Thank you.